Good evening and welcome to the City of Thousand Oaks Planning Commission meeting for Monday, June 8th. I call the meeting to order. If you would please stand and join me to pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Would the Recording Secretary please call the role?
Commissioner Newman.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Roundtree.
Here.
Commissioner Turpale absent. Chair Nichols.
Yes. Thank you. Now is the time for public comment. This time, any person may address the commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on the evening agenda. So, the commission wished to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public. The issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under public comments must submit a white speaker's card and file it with the Recording Secretary before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. The speaker's remarks should be addressed to the commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The light will -- the timer will go from yellow -- will go to yellow when you have one minute remaining. I have no speaker cards for public comments, and if there is anyone who does want to make a comment, please submit your card. If we don't have that, we'll move on forward then. So, next would be written comments and announcements. Mr. Towne, if you have any for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one supplemental packet for tonight's meeting, and it includes two comment emails with regard to your second case tonight, Agenda Item 6B. Crown Castle is the applicant that has for the proposed wireless facility near the intersection of Hillcrest Drive and Westlake Boulevard. And the Recording Secretary has copies of these emails should anybody here present be so interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Will the Recording Secretary please call Agenda Item 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding Case SUP 2015-70016. Applicant: Crown Castle NG West LLC. Request to allow a wireless communications facility on an existing traffic signal light pole with an above-ground equipment pedestal. Location: 1350 Northwest Lake Boulevard.
Thank you very much. And this evening, our case planner is Senior Planner Claudia Pedrosa. Ms. Pedrosa, please give us what you've got.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Nichols and members of the commission. As mentioned a second ago, the request in front of you is for a wireless facility that is located at the southwest corner of Pecup Court and Westlake Boulevard. Is the wireless facility is a small antenna that is going to be connected to an existing traffic signal, and there's also going to be a pedestal cabinet on the right-of-way. So, the property is located, again, in the southwest corner of Westlake Boulevard and Pecup Court, which is basically across the way from Cannon Road. And here is an aerial view. Right now, it's surrounded by residential properties. This, to the south of the site, there's southwest, there's an empty lot, but the other properties have been developed. The purpose of this installation is to provide -- T-Mobile has purchased MetroPCS, but the site itself, right now, was MetroPCS, but nevertheless, is to provide T-Mobile coverage in the surrounding area and to help with some of the network empty spots they have in the area that is on the north ranch and down all the way to Hillcrest. The zoning of this particular project is RPD 1.5 units per acre, sorry, specific plan. And wireless facilities are allowed on the residential zone with a special use permit, and that's the reason why this project sits in front of the commission. Excuse me. This project is part of a DAS system. The DAS is actually a distribution antenna system, and what they are, they're micro sites. They're not like the bigger sites that you see sometimes on the bigger radoms. There's smaller sites that work either with like an node or several nodes together so they can communicate to each other and provide the coverage in the area, which will be harder to do if it were a traditional wireless site, maybe on a radome, or so on and so forth. And that has to do because of the terrain, you know, going up and down hills and around corners, so in order to bear assist this area, this smaller system of DAS, it works better over here. Right now, the proposed system actually includes three nodes. One is the one that you're seeing right now, 1350 Westlake Boulevard. The second one, Ms. Young is going to be presenting that after this hearing, that's the one that's located on the northeast corner of Westlake Boulevard, Hillcrest Drive. And then later on, on July 13, you'll be seeing the third node, which is actually basically halfway between the two projects that you're going to see tonight. This particular project, it has seven alternate sites, alternative site analysis, and this location was chosen because there's an existing traffic signal that it can be attached to, and it's also the father's distance from the neighboring residential area, you know, residences, I should say. The best way to describe this alternative analysis is looking at this exhibit over here, because these are smaller wireless sites, smaller antennas, the circle that they can go on is actually smaller. They don't have a large area they can go to. So, they looked at basically locations within the intersection, whether it's a light pole, a traffic signal, some of the signs that are there, like, you know, bike lane and so on and so forth. And the Crown Castle proposed, and we actually supported the one that they picked, which is the traffic signal, because that's the least visual impact. It's attached to an existing pole, and it's high enough that there's no reason, there's no, there's no, like, interference with people walking and what have you. And in this particular location, the nearest residence is actually to the north, and it's about 270 feet away. So, here's a picture of the subject site with this traffic signal looking southwest from Westlake Boulevard. This one is actually looking from Pecup Court out towards it. And this is some of the equipment that is there right now, some pedestals, and the proposed equipment pedestal is going to be around that area. It's about 28 feet south of the, where the traffic signal is right now. This is a drawing elevation showing how it is. Basically, the top of the antennas matches the top of the pole itself. It's mounted on a bracket. It's about 18 inches away from the pole. The antenna itself is actually small. It's about, I have the dimensions in the next one. And they have also like an attached small cabinet to the pole. This is actually like the radio unit. And again, on the site plan, you basically have the light pole, the traffic signal, sorry, you know, around the corner, and then there's some small trenching around to connect to the telco lines and to the pedestal. Okay, the antenna is actually, it's about 8 inches by 24 inches. It's an omnidirectional antenna, and it's going to be covered with a shroud. Like I said, it's on an 18-inch bracket, and the shroud itself does not go beyond the height of the pole. And this is actually a very small antenna compared to some of the ones that we've seen in other bigger sites, which is more like a, you know, up to 24-inch type of diameter and about five, six feet high. So, obviously, the impact, the visual impact on this one is way less than some of the other alternatives. The pedestal cabinet is about 20 by 20 inches, and it's about four feet high, and like I said, it's about 20 feet, 28 feet away from the pole. And the one box that we saw in the elevation, that's going to be the, basically, the radio unit, and that one is about 8 inches by, 8 by 10 by about, you know, 37 inches high, and it's about 20 feet above rate. In regards to the visual analysis, staff finds this location and this installation favorable in that, again, you know, they're using an existing traffic signal. It is a very small antenna, and the equipment pedestal is going to be located near some of the other pedestals that are already on the right-of-way. And now, we're going to get into some of the photo simulations. This is the way that traffic signal works looking north, so we're looking at here, and then with antenna. There's your antenna right there. And then also looking south on Westlake Boulevard. Here's the way it is now, and here's with antenna and that radio unit over here. And also, they have the pedestal proposed right in that location. And we also have our consultant here, Mr. Kramer, and his office has reviewed the project for FCC standards, and they have verified that the proposed installation does meet the FCC standards in regards to radio frequencies. And also, this project is exempt under CEQA Class 1 because of minor alteration to an existing facility. Based on that, staff recommends approval of SUP 2015-7, it should be 716, based on the findings and subject to conditions contained in the staff report. And like I mentioned, we do have Mr. Kramer over here from telecom firm. If there's any specific questions on the RF and other technical matters. And we also have Mr. Nader Hideri, and we also have Bud Russell from Public Works, if you have any questions in regards to the traffic signal itself and how this facility is going to be working with our traffic signals.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pedrosa. I'll go to our members of the diocese, if we have some questions. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Ms. Pedrosa. Thank you for that presentation. I want to begin on Figure A1, which is, I think, the last schematic figure you showed. It shows a... Sorry?
Sorry, the site plan or the...
Let's see, the title on this. Site plan, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for clarification, there's a line going across Westlake Boulevard indicated as a proposed bore for fiber with bore pits on either side? And my question is whether that's going through existing conduit, or does that, will this project require trenching across Westlake Boulevard?
It is going to require some trenching.
Across, all the way across Westlake Boulevard?
I believe so, and also, the applicant is here if you want to ask more specific questions about that, but yeah, right now, they are trenching across Westlake Boulevard.
Okay. Also, during your presentation, I think I heard you say that this technology involves microcells. I may have misheard, and the reason I'm asking is because on page seven of the report, it specifically says this is not a microcell. So, if we could just clarify what's involved here.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Jonathan Kramer, your technical advisor. The project before you tonight is not a microcell. It's kind of in the overarching name of a small cell, which the FCC is calling a lot of things. But really, what this is, is essentially a remote antenna. This site essentially does not have all of the normal equipment you would find at a microcell or a main station. All this does is it hears the signals off-air, goes in through the antenna, down the pole into the radio node. That node converts those radio signals into light. The light then travels across the fiber optic cable, the one that you mentioned before, that's going across the intersection, back to a switching center. So, this is essentially just a remote antenna. Both of the projects tonight are remote antennas, so they are basically relatively dumb. They hear everything off the air, centered on fiber. It hears everything coming back from the switching station, puts it back over the air.
Thanks. That does help clarify it. My final question probably is also for you. If we were to approve this, well, let me back up. Your last appearance here, I asked you about frequencies and FCC assignments, and you said that because different carriers are given assigned frequencies, there's no overlap. And so, my question for tonight's application is, if we were to approve this, would anything that we're doing in approving this preclude AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or Billy Bob's pretty good wireless carrier, or whomever, from offering cell service in this same area?
Well, I'm not sure about Billy Bob, because I haven't seen the license yet, but the answer is no. This does not preclude provision by wireless, by any other carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, or Commissioners? Mr. New Roundtree.
Ms. Pedrosa, up on Westlake Boulevard, there's the utility tower that already has antennas on it. Can you share why that wasn't considered, or why that isn't a site that we could mount these nodes on?
I'm sure that Mr. Kramer is going to have more to add, but the reason, my understanding is the reason why they don't go into towers is because there's a smaller search signal they're working with. Like I mentioned, it's like a node system, so it's not your typical antennas that you put that cover like a large area. They're more like cover smaller area, and they work together, like Mr. Kramer said about having the radio units talk to each other. So, even moving that node over like 15 feet or 20 feet over would kind of disrupt that connection they have within each other. So, that's why they're just looking at these smaller areas versus a larger facility.
A little bit more, Claudia gave you a good explanation. It's not though, it's not 25 or 50 feet. DAS nodes do have some flexibility as to where they can be moved, but it's generally less than 100 feet, so you're still in basically the same intersection area. Because these are dumb devices that simply pick up signals, they're built along in chains, like the two projects tonight and the third one coming up in July, so that they provide overlapping coverage. So, when you're building a network like this, you're not just considering the one site and the one antenna, but all of the ones that are going to act in concert.
Last question for Ms. Pedrosa. The pedestals, the radio units, I know in other projects we've done, where there's been a big emphasis on putting them underground. So, from an aesthetics point of view, seeing how in parks and other areas, we've been almost required to put them underground, why aren't we putting them underground now? This is a pristine, you know, Westlake Boulevard, scenic highway, all the various things and other sessions. Why are we wanting to put them above ground?
First off, the pedestal, the large pedestal, the 20 by 20 by 48, is actually for Edison. Edison requires that its meters be four feet above ground, so that's an Edison requirement. The small, the actual radio for this project is the one that's mounted on the side of the, it's proposed to be mounted on the side of the traffic signal. And because these are low-power devices, moving them 15 or 20 feet at the frequencies that are involved does have an impact on the signal. You've seen photo sims tonight of this project. If you'll indulge me, if you'll take a look at your package for the next hearing and look at my report, I actually have a photograph of what this looks like built. You may have had a chance to see it already. It's actually across the street from our office in San Diego, so it's what it looks like when it's actually constructed. I think staff's position is that this is such a small device on the side of the radio, of the side of the pole, that the balance of having a very small site here, as opposed to the one further up Westlake, which has the big radome and all the ground equipment, it's a completely different type of configuration. We felt that there was a good balance here between utility and relative lack of visibility because it's attached to a much larger, a much larger structure that already exists.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Heer, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. We've been talking about the pole that this antenna is going to be attached to. It is a city pole, city property, and so, in looking at the conditions, I do want to report that Crown Castle and I, at this time, do not have, or the city do not have, an actual agreement ready to go. This would be a lease agreement. So, we do need to add a condition to the conditions that are already present. It would be Condition Number 30. I have spoken to Crown Castle's attorney, who is not present tonight, about the condition, and he has written back to me that he would approve the condition as far as how we wrote it. We would need to express it tonight, and I will do that in just a minute, but it will be another condition added to the conditions that you have in your packet, and we would need the applicant to affirm that he understands that if he's going to accept it, and assuming that you guys are going to approve it. And I'm not making that assumption for you, but I want you to know that there is another condition I'm recommending. The condition would be Number 30, and that would read "Installations Subject to Lease Agreement," and it would read "This facility is planned to be installed on property owned, maintained, and controlled by the City of Thousand Oaks. Prior to installation of said facility and all related equipment, applicant and city agreed to enter into a lease agreement addressing such use of city property in a form approved by both parties." That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. If further questions, if not, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Kramer, while I'm becoming more informed on cellphone towers, I'm still not quite an expert at this yet, so if you could indulge me for just a moment. I don't think I have seen this type of technology before. This is the first type I've seen. Is this another step in the evolutionary process of cellphone signal technology, or is this been around as just a matter of an option as to which direction cellphone companies choose to improve their infrastructure?
We actually have a couple of DAS sites already in the city. It's a technology that's been around. The sites that I'm aware of were administratively approved. There was one, and I apologize, I'm blanking on the name. It's in Newbury Park. It's the frontage road that's directly to the north of the freeway. It's where the old post office is. At the very end of that road, there's, I know of one site there, and I believe in the staff report, there's, Branda Vista? Okay. So, we've had a few not configured this way. This is the first time we've had a configured site like this. So, stable technology, technology's been around for about 15 years, and we've had a few in the city, but not a whole lot. The reason we haven't had a whole lot is because our topography is so hilly that it takes larger sites to provide kind of the overarching coverage for the city. And these sites, because they are covering very small areas, they're put in really where there's a hole in either the capacity of the network or the signal strength of the network. And that's why, as Claudia said, their search ring, the area that they search within, is actually very small, because they're trying to plug a very specific hole. Here, it's great for us, because we've got it at an intersection where we've got traffic signals, so we're not adding some new verticality. The site that I described before actually is installed on a city sign pole, but it's not a traffic signal. Long explanation.
Okay, thank you. And in a follow-up, also with the larger sites, we typically get some additional information about, you know, whether it be the emitance and things that are associated with that, and I didn't really see too much of that addressed here. What is the difference, and what would be, you know, concerns? Obviously, I have some neighbors here this evening with some concerns. Could you perhaps expand on that a little bit, what some of the issues may be with these sites?
We actually did evaluate the radio frequency transmissions from this site and also the second case tonight, and both of them do comply with the FCC rules. These are actually relatively low-power sites, because they're, they basically don't have enough heat sink, which is actually the technically correct term, to have high-power output transmitters. These are very low-power stations. It's one of the reasons why they want to keep the radio very close to the antenna, because they don't want to lose more signal going along that coax. So, these are actually, in comparison to the normal sites that we have, very low-power.
Okay. And are these nodes line-of-site nodes, where they have to see each other to communicate?
This is a big bugaboo that's been bandied over the years. If any of you in this room turn on your cellphones, you're going to get coverage, and yet, we can't see a cell site in here. So, radio waves do penetrate walls, and they go through things. It's the amount of attenuation that occurs that says whether that radio signal's going to be effective. So, in this case, they generally serve the area that they can see, but the radio waves will continue to travel even further. Radio waves don't simply stop at an arbitrary distance.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you. Mr. Kramer, are we, because this is a little bit different than what we've seen before, and we've seen numerous cases, are we under the same constraints for this as we are with any other cell tower as far as the FCC?
I would have given you a different answer about a year ago, but in the last year, the FCC has released some rules that basically brings all of this infrastructure into the purview of radio. I'll make the differentiation. Your applicant tonight, Crown Castle, is not a wireless company. They're a wireless infrastructure company. They build facilities for wireless companies. We used to take the position that that was different, because they're a telephone company, but now, in terms of providing coverage, the FCC is kind of, it's not formal, but they've kind of extended the umbrella of this is part of wireless to these telephone companies that do provide the service. So, the safe answer is you treat this like a wireless project, even though you have a telephone company applicant, and that's because you have the actual beneficiary of the project being a licensed wireless company. It begs the question, why have a telephone company build a wireless facility? It's a tax, it's all about taxes. If a wireless company builds its own facility and owns it, it has to depreciate the site. If a wireless company builds a site and transfers it to a tower company like Crown Castle, or has Crown Castle build it, then Crown Castle owns it as a real estate investment trust, and the wireless companies rent the sites from them, and then they can essentially write off that rental expense in the current year. So, all of these tower companies have really found their niche because of U.S. tax laws. It's not because the wireless companies decided to do this. It's just, it's from a tax standpoint, it's actually very beneficial, and it allows them to effectively reuse their capital to go out and build more sites.
Thank you.
Mr. Newman.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Reynolds' question, the, I think, still-current FCC document about this uses the phrase "categorically excluded" a lot, especially when it comes to safety concerns. And my question is, is that also the case here, where the FCC says it has sole jurisdiction with regard to what is and is not safe RF?
That's correct. Every wireless project is subject to the FCC rules, and Congress has delegated sole national authority to the commission. What we are allowed to do, both by Congress, well, actually, by Congress in the Telecom Act, by the FCC in their regulations, and by the state of California in the government code, is to determine whether a project before us complies with the FCC rules, and that's our role. If a project complies with the FCC rules, that ends our exploration of the question, and we cannot further... and we cannot further consider that as part of a decision. One of the reasons you hire us is to do that evaluation. And as to this project, and as I'll repeat at the next project, these projects do comply as proposed and as subject to the conditions that are in the project.
Thank you. Ms. Pedrosa, I want to follow up about the trenching of Westlake Boulevard, and maybe this is a question for you or maybe for public safety. But that's a fairly well-traveled thoroughfare. About how long are we talking about in time to do that trench work?
That probably would be a better question to the applicant, because I'm not aware on this. Have any ideas, Public Works?
If it's a question for the applicant, I'm happy to ask. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Heer, I had one question that was prompted with your comment about the condition. I believe in some of our former cellphone tower sites, there's been a condition, something to the effect of that the tower is not to be considered a cell site because of its use, and I don't recall seeing that type of a condition in here. Is that relevant in this case?
Frank, I can't, I can't recall what condition you're talking about, but in this particular case, this is a public, this is a city property. That's why it's a little bit different, that we actually would have a lease. If you recall, I don't know if it's called the White Chapel or, I might call it Peak Place. This was with a faux tree. We had one in which we were going to have a lease agreement in that one, although that one was actually not approved. So we never really had a lease agreement in the last, well, the last five years that I'm aware of with public property. The reason I brought it up again is just to clarify that if you, whatever your decision is tonight, if you approve it, that there is a contract that we are working, an agreement that we're working on. It's actually been on me that it's not completed. We've had some negotiations, and we have some points that we're still trying to iron out. I did not want to stop the proceedings tonight with that issue, but I did want to make it clear that we have to have that in place before we actually move forward with putting something up on the pole.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, I think we'll move forward. We've had a lot of questions, but the good news, I don't think we'll have to repeat very many of them for our next case. So thank you for your patience. At this time, I would like to ask our applicant to come forward, and representing the applicant this evening is Mr. Carver Chu. Please state your name and city residence for the record, please.
The Commissioner. My name is Carver Chu. I reside in Mission Viejo. My office is in Irvine, and I'm here on behalf of Crown Castle, and I appreciate your time this evening.
Mr. Chu, if I could interrupt just for a minute, let you know you have 15 minutes in which to speak.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a few. I appreciate that. And I do want to thank staff for the time that they've put in preparing the staff report, the agenda report, and for presenting that this evening and addressing the questions, and certainly for Mr. Kramer's insight and expertise as well in responding to your questions. I know this is a relatively new design that you're seeing, and it certainly is something I think that you're going to see more of. It's something that's being deployed right now all across Southern California, across the state nationally, but I think it's something that you're going to see more of as the industry looks to address ongoing capacity and coverage needs. So, while it may be somewhat fresh for you tonight, I think that going forward, this is something that you certainly will see in other jurisdictions. It's already being discussed in national advertising campaigns. You'll hear reference to small cells. It really is kind of the movement within the industry to, as Mr. Kramer alluded, to address more specific coverage and capacity issues, and to do so in a manner that's more at scale and in a manner that's less invasive and less impacting, particularly in residential areas and those areas that might be more sensitive to your traditional cell sites. In the areas we're talking about, to go in and put a, you know, a 60-foot fake tree or steel pole, and to have two or three of those along Westlake Boulevard, I think we'd all agree is fairly significantly impacting. And so this type of approach is one that can be done utilizing existing infrastructure and in a manner that's certainly less visibly impacting and less physically impacting to the community. So, we feel really happy about the project, the way it's been presented. We've certainly worked with staff and with the third-party consultant, Mr. Kramer, to come up with a design solution that we feel is the least impacting and a way to accommodate this type of installation in a reasonable manner. It's certainly an approach that's been very successfully deployed in other jurisdictions, including Westlake Village. We're on several of their brown streetlights. Agoura Hills just approved two of these as well. So it's an approach and an application that we've done a lot of, and we've been done in this area. And so we feel very, very comfortable with the design. I believe Public Works is fully vetted. The shared infrastructure approach, we haven't had any issues with jurisdictions in terms of them, the city's being able to manage and conduct their maintenance and operations of their facilities. We don't interfere with that. It's an unmanned facility, so it's remotely monitored, so it's not a traffic generator and not something that's going to impact pedestrian or vehicle flow on any regular basis. So, we think it's a good project, and we certainly encourage your approval. I wanted to address a few questions that came up, as was discussed, about the trenching. Commissioner Newman, we will not be opening up a trench, per se. We'll be a bore. The idea is to, you do need to open up the bore pits, but all the work will be underground. And typically, I think it's less than a day to do that. We'll have a traffic control plan that'll get approved so that we can manage traffic along there while we do that work, and we'll work certainly within the hours established by the city to do that. There was a question, actually, the comment from the Assistant City Attorney regarding the Condition Number 30. As was discussed, we've vetted that information, that condition. We're comfortable with that being included in the conditions of approval for the project. I think beyond that, I would just add that, and really, it's just a couple of, I think, point-of-statistics. The feds indicate that seven out of every 10 emergency 911 calls now originate from a cellphone. So, over 70% of 911 calls are coming from cell phones. Additionally, four out of every 10 American homes, and the number is growing rapidly, have completely foregone their landline connection and are wireless-only. So, from a public safety standpoint, we think that it's imperative that jurisdictions have reliable, accessible wireless service. These projects are an effort to improve wireless service along the Westlake Corridor and certainly will provide the added public safety benefit to your residents, to vehicle traffic along there. And so, we think it's much-needed infrastructure. And with that said, I would respectfully request your approval, and would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, or, excuse me, Mr. Chu. Any questions from the Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You'll have another five minutes for rebuttal. Now going to our speakers. I do have six speaker cards, so that means we'll have four minutes for each speaker. So I'll just call up the first one and get the second one ready to go, and then if you could remember to state your name and the city of residence for the record, please. First will be Wanda Calio. Following would be Kim Bargetti.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Wanda Calio. I've resided in Thousand Oaks since 1968 and proud of it. I have lived on, in North Ranch for the last 30 years, and I would like to say that the airport is there already, and now a company wants to change the safety for 405 residents that are property owners that are there. I'm just wondering if anybody had done any checking on the electromagnetic fields or the radiation that is emitted from all of this new technology that we're supposed to be having or may have. The concern is about the wireless microwave radiation, which causes stress, sleep disorders, Alzheimer's, cancer, and this is all medical facts. So I'd like to know if anyone has any medical experience or if any of this has been looked into, because it's definitely a concern for the family and our friends. We had a home on Landero, and trying to sell that because it was on Landero with the wires going across the street was a major concern. I had to actually, in escrow, had to get all the official reports on how many magnetic fields are coming across before we could close escrow. So I don't know if that's going to become an issue. And as far as I know, T-Mobile's the only one that is not totally receptive in our area, and that's the only company. And if you watch CNN, they're in the process of being sold, so that's probably not even an issue. And also, I'd like to see a copy of the emails, and the Condition 30 was brought up. So if the company is selling that space, how much is the city going to be charging to have that installed? And most home builders are installing a minimum of four landlines in all of North Ranch properties, so that's not an issue for any of the homes in our area. And if these two towers are not enough because of all the hills there, are they going to be needing more further in? I'd like to know those answers also, and that's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calio. Sorry for mispronouncing your name. Any questions from Commissioners? Okay, thank you. And what we'll do is the staff will be taking notes with questions and comments, and they will be responding at the end of all the speakers' presentations. So if you'll stay tuned, hopefully we'll get that to you when they're all concluded here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Also, for the record, I do have one written statement card. I will pass that along. Next will be Kim Bargetti, followed by Andy Myers.
Good evening. My name is Kim Bargetti, and I have lived in Westlake Village since 1989. I live in the North Ranch area also, which I love, and I will be going through that intersection every single day, and I will be very aware that that structure is there. And let me start by saying I would oppose any cell structure in the area because I am already really saddened when I look up on the hills and see those ugly structures standing there. It's just a blight upon the neighborhood, and I don't believe that these, whether it's a cell structure or an antenna, I don't believe that they belong in residential areas where you can see them. And I understand that this is very small, but it's still going to be there. It's going to be attached to the light. It's visible. How safe is it? Is it possible for that to come down? I don't know if any of you have been to that area, but it gets very windy, very windy. So what is the possibility of that coming off? What is the possibility of that catching fire? It's also a very high fire area. So these are some of my concerns, and I know that cell structures and antenna can lead to a loss of property values. I, myself, if I were to move, I would be researching all of these things, and I would not buy a home that was in a close proximity to any sort of cell structure or an antenna. There's also the possibility that that could collapse, just like a cell structure can collapse. They have done that. So that's another thing. And I also agree with my neighbor that there is adequate coverage there, and her bringing up the point that T-Mobile will be bought by another company perhaps maybe negates even the need for this. So that's another thing. And I understand that due to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, all local governments are stripped of their power to consider potential health risks from radio frequency radiation, which I think is very unfair. But I would like it to be noted that the World Health Organization has labeled RF frequencies a possible carcinogen. So, no one is saying that for sure it is. I think we all know it's very easy to find lots and lots of research, particularly from Europe, that does link certain diseases such as cancer to RF frequencies. In Europe, there have been many studies about this, and there are many countries that have banned wireless and cell towers to be within 1,500 feet of schools. Many countries have banned Wi-Fi in schools because they're aware that this is a possible health hazard as well. So I would just like people to consider that, consider the look of our neighborhood, the health of our residents, and what could lie in the future. This is a really untested thing. As the gentleman said, this is a relatively new technology. Do we need to be the guinea pigs for something that may turn out to be the tobacco of the future? That's what I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next will be Mr. Andy Myers, followed by Mr. Stephen Cresco.
Hey there. I'm Andy Myers. I live in Thousand Oaks in North Ranch. I guess the first question I have for you guys is, do you want this in your backyard? Do you guys want, whenever this new technology is sitting about 100 feet from your child's bedroom? Because that's how it is for me. My house is about, this is right down Westlake. I was here a couple months ago discussing a wall that would actually be covered by privets you wouldn't see from the street, but you guys denied us putting a wall up to stop the pollution and the noise and cars from flying in, but you are debating the possibility of allowing a company with an untested technology to send rays 100 feet into my kid's bedroom window, which is kind of crazy to me. Mr. Chu is a representative of the company. He was in, down in Point Doom like a short while ago, and they turned down the antenna for the same reasons, just for untested safety and also for overloading of the, of, I guess, the pole there. Do you guys know about this? Or, doesn't matter. Also, the company, Crown Castle, purchased, it was Nex G Networks, and actually, they investigated their equipment for possibly being one of the causes of the 2007 Malibu fires. And the town of Hempstead on Long Island filed a $100 million lawsuit against the company, and that's what we're going to be dealing with with this. My neighbors spoke about the health concerns. I mean, there's just like pages and pages of people denying, communities denying the cell towers by schools, by residential areas. One of the reasons why they want to put this tower where it is is because it's far away from homes. It's not, though. It's literally right around the corner from where I live. I guess for me, you know, being a resident of Thousand Oaks, you know, trying to figure out, you know, where the line is. You guys won't allow us to block pollution, but you will allow, you know, these EMFs or whatever they're called, the RF frequencies. It just seems like that priorities are out of whack. I understand the city needs to make money, but we also need to take care of the citizens. Yeah, I guess that's about it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Any questions? And next will be Mr. Stephen Cresco, followed by Vic Coffeyon.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Plating Commission, my name is Stephen Cresco. I live in Westlake Village. My home was right in one of the photos up there in the cul-de-sac of Hillcrest Drive. Been a resident for 17 years. I've got a disabled child who lives at home 24/7. I have a lot of red flags about this project. It's interesting to me that says if those traffic lights were moved 20 feet, this project wouldn't work. Is it the project wouldn't work, or is that because of the existing infrastructure the company doesn't want to really pay for, putting in a location that's in- doesn't want to really pay for, putting in a location that's in non-residential areas? T-Mobile is fourth in a four-horse race. They have the least amount of subscribers. Why would we allow them, to basically give them opportunities to put it in residential areas that we don't want? We live in a five-home cul-de-sac. All five neighbors do not want this. There are three homes within 500 feet, three people are elderly, that live across the street diagonally. They don't want this. There's a condominium complex right across the street. They don't want this. I wish they were here today. They're not being represented. Secondly, we already have a very large box on the south side of Westlake Boulevard. It's a six-by-six area, and now you want to put another unpleasing aesthetic box north in a six bicycle, whatever size it is. So we talked about the aesthetics of Westlake Boulevard. It's beautiful. But I don't understand why we want to put in wireless devices. Neighbors don't want it. I don't want it. I don't want my child being exposed to this. The red flags? It's unproven technology. It's brand-new. I'll quote, "It's being utilized elsewhere," but you've already had other governments like Point Doom reject it. Now you look at also, you've got, the Acorn wrote an article roughly six weeks ago about the increase of ticketing, people on their wireless cell phones texting, and now you're enabling and giving, quote, "more power to be doing more texting." When you look at the capabilities, LE Fire Department, a different type of technology, but they were looking to put towers on every one of the fire stations. There's a lawsuit going on there. So I'm asking the committee, uphold the aesthetics of Westlake Boulevard, do not expose my family to new technology that's unproven. The point-to-point site, I can't believe that. It has to be on that particular light pole, otherwise it won't work. I think that's a little bit of a fallacy. My big issue is, overall, we've been there 17 years. We love where we live. Neighbor's great. Neighborhood is great. T-Mobile, again, is fourth in a four-horse race by a long short of subscribers. I don't see the value of putting that technology in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cresco. And for the record, I overlooked that he'd actually requested to speak on Agenda Item 6B, so my apologies for that. Next will be Mr. Vic Caffian, followed by Jack Lance. Please forgive my pronunciation if you could correct me.
Good evening. My name is Fahy Vic Caffian, and I live in Thousand Oaks since 2009. And we're in a little cul-de-sac that's a private area, and our houses sit high up on the property. I mean, the properties or the houses are higher, so it's going to be the eye level where these towers are going to sit. So they're going to be straight shooting straight into the houses.
Excuse me, Mr. Caffian?
Yes.
Just to clarify, because we do have two cell sites. It says Agenda Item 6A, but was this, were you concerned about the site that's up by Canaan Road or by Hillcrest?
By Hillcrest.
Okay. Then that would be Agenda Item 6B.
Okay.
So if you could hold your thoughts for just a moment, and when we announce the next case, we'll get to you for the next case.
Oh, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Just a mistake on the card here.
Not at all.
Thank you very much. Oh, that's okay. When we get things this similar, it's easy to happen. Thank you very much, though. Okay, that being said, Mr. Jack Lance, just to clarify, you're 6B also then? Okay. All right. Glad we got that clarified. Okay. We're on a roll. Okay, then that will conclude our public comments. So everyone that wanted to speak for the Canaan Road site, 6A, has spoken. That being the case, now we have questions, or we want to, staff questions, okay? Or staff clarification? We want to, we've had a lot of questions, a lot of comments here. I hope you folks, I try to scribble down as many as I can. If you could sort through those and give us some responses, we'd appreciate that.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'll take probably the bulk of the responses this evening for This is an area where people are very thoughtful and concerned about radio frequencies. But as I discussed earlier, we are constrained by federal law. That's our primary constraint. So that's one of the reasons why Thousand Oaks historically has taken a very proactive view of actually investigating the amount of signal coming out of the projects. That was a, one of the questions that came out. Do we look at it? The answer is we look at it extremely carefully. We actually don't just take the applicant's word for it. We get the underlying RF emissions data, and we work back the numbers using the FCC's formula. But we do in Thousand Oaks more than most cities do in terms of determining whether a proposed project will comply with the FCC rules, and this one does. In terms of the technology being tested or untested, it's a very tested technology. It's a stable technology. As I indicated before, this incarnation of the technology's been around for about 15 years. What's different about this is simply a different configuration of antenna, which is actually smaller and less visible than the more traditional DAS antenna systems. So there's nothing different or new about this, other than the fact that it's physically smaller. And again, these are low-power sites. In terms of concerns about, is it safe? Is it going to come down? Wind damage, fire, and so forth? These are, the equipment is rated to be installed on light standards, and is part of both a lease and as part of the permit that would be granted by Building and Safety to actually construct the site, they would go through that engineering analysis. To that issue, there was a comment about the Malibu fire and Next G Communications, which is now owned by Crown. Yes, they were definitely, the state found that Next G had overloaded the pole, along with several other companies, and they felt that that was a contributing element. This is different. We're only talking about one radio, and this is on a steel pole as opposed to a wood pole, which was the case in Malibu. And this being city property, the city has an intrinsic and core issue to make sure that anything that's attached to its property meets all of the engineering codes. So this is going to be reviewed by Public Works. It's going to be reviewed by Traffic Management. There'll be lease issues involved. There's indemnifications that go into the lease that don't normally apply for the projects that you approve that are on other sorts of property. So this actually has higher levels of protection at the end of the process. Regarding the comment about T-Mobile being fourth in a four-horse race, I agree. They have been a perennial laggard in terms of their subscribers, and they're taking steps to improve that. But that's not a basis for us to, it's not a legal basis for us to deny a project. The FCC, or the law on this, and for the members of the community, I'll speak to the law as an attorney, as I am in this area, but the law on this comes out of a case from 2005, MetroPCS versus City and County of San Francisco. And in that case, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals set down the rule that says, when you're evaluating a request by a provider, you don't look at the other providers. You don't look to see if someone else has coverage in the area. It's called the one-provided rule. You only look to your applicant. And the reason is, technically, it's pretty straightforward. If you have a Verizon phone, it won't work on T-Mobile. If you have an AT&amp;T phone, it won't work on Sprint. So there's no roaming that can occur, and for that reason, the court, I think very soundly, said, you only look to the provider who's before you. So while T-Mobile is the fourth, for our purposes tonight, they're the one and only that we consider. What about T-Mobile and Dish Network? Well, Dish Network, there is talk on the street, nothing formal yet, but of a merger between T-Mobile and Dish. I think it'd be actually a very interesting play from a technology standpoint, but they're different providers. One provides TV service, the other provides wireless communications, terrestrial communications. The reason why it makes sense is because each one has frequencies the other can use. I suspect that something will actually come of it, but if it does, it's not a point. It just, it has no impact on this particular project, because you have an applicant before you tonight who is T-Mobile, asking for a site to serve the T-Mobile network through the company that's going to build it. So unfortunately, that's not something that we can properly consider. There was a comment about the size of the meter pedestal, and again, the meter pedestal is a requirement of Southern California Edison. It's not a city requirement. Edison will not connect power to a site without the meter pedestal. So we have traditionally looked at the small meter pedestals, which this is, and knowing that it's a requirement, so the staff has found a location that it believes is appropriate for this intersection. And speaking of this intersection, what about the comments about, well, why this pole versus another pole versus another? And it's simply, you pick one as staff, and you look at where it is in relation to other things. It's not just which pole, but where are their utilities? Because this has to connect back to the power, which we've just talked about. It's actually not in the best location in terms of the fiber, because that's why they're going to want to trench or bore across Westlake, or across the Boulevard to get to the site. But there's a balance as to this. So when staff looks at this, when we're advising staff, I mean, frankly, we have to be resident-neutral, and there's always going to be someone who wishes that it were across the street. Is there a technical reason why it couldn't be across the street? Not until the next person shows up and says, well, I don't want it in my corner either, in my corner either. So this is a tough one, and we try, we cannot, when we're looking at a project as your technical advisors, we can't look at a particular resident or particular concern, because we have to serve all of the community. We're hired to make sure that the best is provided to the community as a whole. There'll be some other questions in 6B, but I, there was a comment about the fact of that the World Health Organization has labeled this as a carcinogen. Yes, they have. It's a potential carcinogen, is what they've labeled it as. It's the same, and they literally, and I'm not making this up, but they put it in the same category as dill pickles, as pickles. You know, the World Health Organization has its standards, but in the United States, since we've been talking about other countries this evening as well, when we look at compliance, we're obligated to follow the federal law. We can't look beyond the federal law, because we, as a government, expect our citizens to follow our laws, and we're expected, as a government, to follow the laws above us. So again, we have to constrain our evaluation of the project as to whether it complies with the FCC rules, and again, this one does. I think I've covered most of property values. I'm getting another comment here from Claudia as well. Property values, this is a tough one. There've been a lot of court cases on property value diminution. There is not a very large body of evidence on this, and the courts that have evaluated this have basically said, you've got to bring in really hardcore data from appraisers who are experienced with this, but simply believing that a devaluation will occur is not a legitimate basis to deny a project. It takes a very high level of proof, and if that proof is met, in some cases, courts have agreed with it, in some cases, they have not. This is not the type of site that has prompted those property value devaluation points before, because this is an extremely small site attached to an existing pole as opposed to planting a new pole somewhere. Let me see where Claudia's. Distance 20 feet. Oh, if it's moved over 20 feet, it won't work. It will work. It will work. It would work pretty much on, at any corner, any of the corners there. But again, that wasn't the criteria that drove it to this particular corner. It was access to power, which is typically the most difficult utility to get access to. Boring across a street, directional boring, it's what it's called. It's called directional boring. It's actually where you essentially drive a pipe that's shooting high-pressure water, and that's actually very easy to do. In my prior life, as an engineer for a cable TV company, that's a technique that we used all the time, very straightforward, much easier than getting power. So why here? Primarily driven by Edison. I'm pretty much talked out, and I'd love to answer more questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kramer. Appreciate your input. Ms. Pedrosa, did you have anything to add, or did we get everything covered?
He got everything covered. He said it very nicely. That's why you had him talk about my item.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions of staff at this point?
Chair, I do have one comment. You did hear a request for information regarding a lease. We do not have a lease agreement at this time, so I will not be discussing any type of price, simply because we don't have one at this point. We will be doing or negotiating for a market rate based upon similar devices in other jurisdictions, and we have looked at that. But at this time, we do not have a contract to sign or execute, therefore, we'll not be discussing any terms of that contract until it's executed.
Just for the public record, Mr. Heer, is that something that would be available for public review at some point?
Good question. Certainly, public contracts, city contracts are public records, and the public have a right, obviously, to request them. I'll be happy to provide one if it's requested, but at this stage, we do not have one to provide since it's not executed.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. There's also a question about receiving copies of emails. Would that be a similar public records request?
I would want more detail, but certainly you can make a public records request for emails, and we evaluate public records act requests as they come in, as to whether or not they're appropriate, and the response that's necessary based upon what they've asked for.
Mr. Towns?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe that she was referring to the emails in the supplemental packet, which were provided.
Okay. Thank you. Those would be available online?
Yes, they became, they become part of the permanent online record of tonight's hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. I believe there is also a question regarding, will there be more towers needed? So perhaps our applicant could address that, it is Suzie Kedsepper. Let me call you up for just a second, make sure you don't have any other questions here. Any other questions or any comments? Yes, Commissioner Rontree.
Mr. Kramer, let me give a residential, average Joe commissioner question here. With all the various things that we can't do here on the commission, whether it's health issues, RF emissions, and the whole laundry list of things, why are we here, then, as a commission, if we really have no input as to aesthetics, location, RF emissions, health? Help me here, because this is about my 15th cell site, and I sit here as a resident with one that's proposed down my street, and I sit here saying, well, it looks like I'm not going to be able to do anything on that one as well. Why isn't this all over the counter? If we're simply going, are we going, I feel like I'm going through the motions here at some point.
Well, we operate under Resolution 97-197, which I helped to write way back in the day, back in a very different technological day and a very different regulatory day. So why is this before you? It's because you do have aesthetic input. You do have locational input. If you find that this is not the right location, and you can articulate a reason that is not related to radio frequency, because that's off the table, then you can make a suggestion or make proposals as to moving it somewhere else, again, as long as it's a legally valid basis to do it. I truly believe that we've operated for a heck of a long time under 97-197. I know staff has talked about bringing an update forward at some point, but I think as a homeowner myself, in the city I live in, Santa Monica, I want my city to put this through the paces, to go through and make sure that the best possible project is brought forward. Now, one of the things that you have entrusted to staff is to do the filtering. I mean, we don't bring you projects for you to disapprove. We bring you projects that we believe, listening to you over the years, meet the standards that you've articulated under 97-197, but still, you're the final decision-maker, because you're the ones who represent the community. We serve the community, but you're the ones who represent them. So you play an important role. Could some of these projects be handled administratively? Some cities do. Some cities have said if it's small and if it fits within a certain type of, Stevie Valley nearby, great example. Stevie Valley has Seamy Valley has a process where if the planning commission has approved a design, then the next time that design comes forward, even at a different location, then staff is authorized to do that. Now, you may find that appropriate for Thousand Oaks, or you may not, but it's not staff's decision to do that. And you may say, "You know what? A design is a design wherever it is." Or you might say, "The design is related to where it is." These are the decisions you make, and that's why it is important, I believe, for you to take a role until you decide that there's a better path forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Commissioner Reynolds?
Ms. Pedrosa, we heard Mr. Myers talk about how close this was to his home, and in our packet on page five, it says that the antenna will be approximately 250 feet from the nearest residential property. And is that measured to the edge of the property across the street? I'm talking across Westlake Boulevard, because I know his house is one or two down. And he kept on saying it was 100 feet from his property. So it really is even further than the 250 feet to his property, correct?
Okay, I guess I've been told that actually that comment was referred to the 6B item. It's not, in this case particularly.
No, I think he lives closer to the 6A. 6B is down at Hillcrest. He's up closer to, yeah. But he's not right at the corner. He's, he's a little south. He's south.
The measurement that I did was to the closest structure, residential structure on the property. So the property line may be within 100 feet, well, the street is probably wider than...
It says 250 feet. I was trying to figure out, is the house across Peacock or across Westlake Boulevard?
The north house. The one, the one, the closest house is the one to the north on Peacock.
Okay, okay. So his property is all the way across Westlake Boulevard. So it's got to be even further away than 250 feet.
Yeah, it would be further away, and the street itself is 80 feet plus, you know, the additional right-of-way on both sides, so, but to the closest is actually, we did measure all like throughout.
I just couldn't figure out where he was getting the 100 feet, because I thought it was further away, because I know which house is his. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Towns and then Mr. Kramer.
You can, you can see, I believe, Mr. Myers' house on page three of your packet. And there's a scale bar on that exhibit, on the aerial photograph. You can see the approximate distance. It appears to be roughly 250 to 300 feet.
So his house is this one?
Correct. And as Ms. Pedrosa mentioned, the nearest residence is the one at Peacock Court.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the number here that you need to be aware of is 17 feet. 17 feet is, based on the emissions from this site, the edge to the controlled zone, beyond 17 feet in any direction, up, down, sideways, left, right. The FCC's rules say that a person can be exposed 24/7, seven days a week, and it will not exceed the FCC's rules. And to put the FCC rules in perspective, the FCC rule that we're talking about, the 100% FCC rule, is 50, it's 2%, 50 times less than the point where you can actually measure a physiological change based on RF. So above the FCC standard, which we check for, there's still a 50 times safety margin. So the number that we should be talking about is 17 feet. Once we're past 17 feet, this is not an issue that can be considered. That's the law.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Mr. Newman?
Just a quick follow-up on that. Have there been any studies that compare the many, many sources of RF energy within many homes today? Wi-Fi, Bluetooth, key fobs on cars? They compare those energy sources that are already there, microwave ovens in the 2.4 gig range? Compare all that with the ambient energy that comes from cell towers at various distances?
There've been a number of comparisons made. I think the most relevant comparison is that people who have cell phones, who have cell phones essentially in their pocket or near their bodies, are actually exposed to higher levels of radio frequency than you'll get from any cell tower. That said, it's still, the FCC regulates that exposure as well. So distance makes a huge difference, because radio waves don't get weaker as they travel away, but they disperse, and therefore, average power at any point gets lower and lower. That's why, when we're looking at these locations, again, we do the calculation, and we say, "All right, in this site, based on this power and this frequency, there's a control zone that goes out 17 feet. What's within 17 feet?" And some projects in other cities actually have been denied, because there were things within 17, or whatever the relevant number was. But again, you don't see these projects, because we don't let them get to you, because we don't bring you projects that are not going to comply with the FCC rules, or that aren't going to comply with 97-197. That's the job of staff to filter.
Thank you again, Mr. Kramer. Any additional questions for staff? Okay, hearing done. Mr. Chu, if you would kindly stop for, you have another five minutes for a rebuttal. I know I gave you one homework assignment, and perhaps there were some others you got along the way, if you could address those, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really don't have a whole lot to say, because it sounds like, listening to Mr. Kramer and staff, they've done a very good job of responding to all the questions that were identified. I have a couple that I can respond to. But I know the question was asked about future, future sites, and the term "towers" being thrown around, and I just want to make clear that we're not talking about a traditional cellphone tower or cell site. We're talking about a single 24-inch, 8-inch diameter antenna on a traffic signal with one small radio optical repeater. So very different from, on an existing structure. So this is, this is not a tower in the true sense, nor in the conventional sense, in terms of wireless facilities. So in terms of future installations like this, we don't have any plans for others. Certainly in connection with this project, there are none others beyond the three that you'll be, that'll be coming before you. It's been noted that there are facilities up on the hill. I believe AT&amp;T and Verizon, the two larger companies already do have a baseline level of service through, through Westlake Boulevard. So as of now, there, I'm not aware of any plans to add more sites in this area. It's certainly possible down the road at some point, if there's a problem area, or if there's an area where there's some type of technical need, a carrier could opt to approach, approach you directly, or work through an infrastructure developer like ourselves to try to, to address that need. But that's, it is on a, truly on an as-needed basis. I'm not aware of any future plans beyond what we're sharing with you. The comment was made, just a couple of things. A comment was made that this is just a moneymaker for the city. I just want to clarify that, that we actually proposed a freestanding installation up along, in that general area. And it was really through our, our submittal, through our pre-application process and our back-and-forth with staff and with the outside consultant, that we ended up at the traffic signal. So your ordinance and your, the processes that you have in place to, to regulate these types of installations actually really directed us to, to an existing facility, and the traffic signal was the closest existing facility that we could utilize. So really, we've kind of backed into the situation, and so it wasn't as if the city was putting out an RFP or looking to, to try to take advantage of this opportunity to, you know, have a revenue stream. So that's really just a byproduct of the process, and I just want to make sure we clarified that. I think, I know Councilman Roundtree talked about the process. Why not just over the counter? In many jurisdictions, this type of installation is over the counter. It's encroachment permit only. So I think, as Mr. Kramer has identified, I think your process is more intensive, certainly more rigorous, and we're certainly okay with that. I know it seems perhaps mundane, and that you might not have control, but you are certainly helping identify the location, the ultimate configuration. And so I think that in comparison to many other jurisdictions, you actually probably are getting a little more of a review than we're experienced seeing with this type of facility, which is such a small scale and often viewed just as a utility installation. That's really it. Again, this is not a, not a tower. We think that this is an effective alternative to a conventional tower. It's not something that's good to be on a hillside, taken away from the aesthetics of the community. We see it as something that can be real, quite integrated quite effectively into the fabric of a residential community. So we, again, encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. I do have a question for you, but I want to make sure any other commissioners, okay. Mr. Chu, as a follow-up to your comment about selecting a freestanding location first, I know part of the ordinance is the city tries to encourage using its existing infrastructure. Where was that existing, or where was your proposed freestanding before you went to the existing?
It was at that same intersection. We were near the southeast corner, further, further south, where we had better line of sight with, because of the trees. But obviously, as you've just indicated, that's not something that's encouraged by the city. So we were willing to work with staff and reassess our design and shift it across the street.
So it still was within that general radius that you were looking for? It wasn't, you know?
Yeah, it wasn't 500 feet south or north. It was literally across the street and down maybe 20 feet.
Okay. One final question, just from a technological perspective, I don't know if this is your forte. We often see technology changing before us almost on a weekly basis. Is this another facet of that, where we could, perhaps you come back to us in two more years and you say, "Hey, things have changed. This is now the, the new big thing." Do you see that in the horizon?
That's a good question. I think, as you probably have seen, I mean, wireless technology is ever-evolving. I read that they're already doing trials on 5G, so, and Mr. Kramer probably can talk about this, but I think that even, I think Japan is hoping to unveil this within the next couple of years. I think by 2018, they'd like to see 5G introduced at a commercial level. So the demand for wireless infrastructure is only going to increase as, as people move to smartphones. The penetration rate is huge. The number of mobile devices outnumbers the number of people on the, on the planet, I believe. It's, we're only becoming more digital and more dependent upon these types of mobile devices, which just increases the, it just ratchets up the pressure on the industry to provide adequate technology, infrastructure. I think that the technology will evolve. In terms of how it affects the design of an installation, that's hard to say. Will antennas get smaller? Will they get bigger? I think that, that there will be options in the years ahead, but I can't tell you whether they're going to be smaller or bigger. I just know that they're going to be more complex and more sophisticated. I'm not sure what that ultimately will translate into.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and comments. Any other questions? That being the case, I have no more cards. The remaining cards are for item 6B. I did pass along the one statement card. I think that covers it. So at that, this point, I can close the hearing, correct? And we're going to close the hearing and just move on to discussion. So open it for commissioners, comments, discussions. Commissioner Newman?
Just to follow up on a point you just made, or a question you just asked. There is a condition, condition 18, technological improvements, that if, if this technology were to become obsolete, there's a requirement to remove it. I'm not expecting it to be obsolete in the near term, but if that were to happen, for whatever reason, I think we're covered on that.
Good point. Thank you. Any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Comments or a motion? Mr. Newman?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt SUP 2015-70016 with the condition, Mr. Heer noted, condition 30, installation subject to lease agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Comments or questions?
I guess a comment is, I want to say it's the 14th or 15th. I've almost lost track of how many of these. Commissioner Reynolds, same for you? Quite a few. Yeah, quite a few. And I continue to ask the same question each time. What input can we give? And I've used the example, Joe resident, more times than not, but I had that same feeling as we have now. I think we all have a similar feeling that these are the least popular cases to discuss, because we have very little input. Now, yes, we have some input, but not a lot. But I'm also not in a position to say, "Well, I'm just going to hold tight and draw a line in the sand, and we'll see what happens," because what happens is that utility companies and phone companies sue cities for not approving projects. So I'm not in the position of wanting to put the City of Thousand Oaks in a position to be sued. So I, if I said begrudgingly, once again, would have to support the measure, and at that point, have no other comments at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. And I will support the motion. This is never easy, and I know that everybody doesn't want it in their backyard, but yet we want the technology and be able to use the technology. And I think until we actually have findings with RF factors and things like that, that, and our hands are so tied by the FCC, that's why I asked that question. If this is something new, that maybe we could get around that regulation, but we can't. I will reluctantly also support the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a couple of comments, just to point out, I have a cell tower in my backyard practically. It's just across the street, closer than this one is to any of these incidents. So I know what this is all about. I experienced it firsthand, and it's not even the carrier that I use either. So it's not like it really provides a benefit to me. And then the other thing I want to mention is that we actually have denied a case before, at least one that I can remember. I've only been here for a couple of years, have seen a handful of these, and because it wasn't quite designed the way we had envisioned and we thought was appropriate. And so we do have some latitude there. And I do think Mr. Kramer brings up a good point, that staff does filter a lot of the issues, whether it be on a case that we see or cases that we don't see. The ones that really don't comply with our local regulations or even the federal regulations. And so the ones that we actually see, those have been addressed. And now it's just a matter of those, those final few that crop to the top, creep to the top of the pile. So at least I'm relieved to know that, that we do see the ones that have met all the regulations. Again, because I have one in my backyard, I'm a bit concerned about the federal regulations kind of overseeing local regulations. But that's, I guess, part of our opportunities, we live in a federally regulated government. Some we like, some we don't, but they have our best interest at stake. We like to think so at least. But that's kind of where we're standing. So I would certainly appreciate your comments. Again, as we've heard before, these are the most well-attended, from local residents, cases that we hear, because it is important. Thank you for your input. Appreciate them. We always seem to get new questions and new information that we didn't have before, even though we hear these many, many times. So I do appreciate your input. So I will also support the motion. So with that, please vote.
Motion passed 4-0.
Oh, yes, yes. Okay, just to clarify, that any grieved party who wishes to appeal the planning commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal within the, with the community development department within 10 days. Okay. And with that, if you, if the recording secretary could please call case B, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6B regarding case SUP 2015-70017. Applicant, Crown Castle NG West LLC. Request to allow a wireless communications facility on an existing... Request to allow a wireless communications facility on an existing traffic signal, light pole, with an above-ground equipment pedestal. Location 4103 East Hillcrest Drive.
Thank you very much. And just to clarify, this is the second location at the intersection of Westlake and Hillcrest for case 6B. And Ms. Lori Young is our senior planner. If you want to give us the details on this project, we appreciate it.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Nickles and members of the planning commission. This case is very, very similar to the previous case you just heard of, and it's part of the cluster that Crown Castle is proposing for Westlake Boulevard. In fact, when they came in for their pre-op, many times when we see the pre-op, it's something that we just cannot approve. And in this case, their search area was very small. And in fact, a lot of their alternatives would make things worse, but they were still pretty small sites, usually in areas next to residential. A carrier may propose one of these like light poles 30 feet high, right next to the backyard. And then the radome is really big and tall. In this particular case, this is a lot smaller than what we usually see. And in fact, we're the ones who suggested that they look into going on a traffic signal. We've looked into this many other times, but that never went forward because staff felt that since you already have this big structure there, and it's located further away from the homes, there would be less visual impact by utilizing what is already existing. This site is located on the northeast side, north of Hillcrest Drive on Westlake Boulevard. There's basically three, three traffic signals on each of these corners. The proposed site was the best alternative because there was less conflict with the surrounding Trying to use this. This is the elevation. This shows, it's exactly like Claudia's, the last case, with the antenna mounted on the side of the pole below, or at least even to the height of the pole, and then their equipment box containing their radio. They're also planning to trench on Westlake Boulevard under, to the south, 150 feet. The coverage will be mainly to provide, or to fill in the gap along Westlake Boulevard, which has historically been difficult for many carriers to find sites because of the limited structures in the area, many residences, and due to the topography. As mentioned earlier, this is part of the DAS system, and this will be one of the three sites. The next site, which is coming before the planning commission on July 13th, is located on a proposed new street light. And in this case, there was no other structures around. And then there's, there was open space to the west of it. And that, that is the node in the middle, number two. The applicant looked at five alternate locations, mainly the other three traffic signals on the other corners. But due to potential interference with the surrounding trees, those wouldn't work as well. They also looked at the shorter traffic signals, but it didn't meet the height that they needed to. So then they would have to increase the height, have a larger pole and a wider pole. It was felt that it would be preferable to use an existing structure instead of putting a new freestanding pole next to the proposed traffic signal north of Westlake Drive. And this traffic signal met the height requirements. There was no trees around it, and it was not immediately adjacent to a residence. I know that there's residents near, near this traffic signal, but comparing it to many other cases we've seen or proposals where the pole is like right next to the house, this is a preferable situation. Like the previous case, it's a smaller antenna, only one antenna, 24-inch high, and with a smaller radome. There's no equipment, underground vault needed. It's just a smaller, just the meter pedestal. It's four feet high. And it's going to be located in the area where there's other utility boxes. Staff feels this is a preferable location, and it will be, along with the previous one, one of the first cell sites on a city-owned traffic signal. The antenna is small and the equipment is small, and that's very favorable for low visual impact. Here you could see the proposed pole in the background, looking north. I can't use this thing, but you could see on top where the antenna is and then the proposed meter cabinet, which are similar, similar to all the other ones we have. This is looking south. And this is showing it with the equipment, proposed equipment. As always, these projects are reviewed by Jonathan Kramer or somebody in his office to make sure that we comply with all the regulations. And this project is exempt from CEQA. So looking at, at the whole project, we recommend approval of this proposal based on the findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Commissioners, any questions for staff? I do have a couple of quick questions. And I'll warn my public works folks that I do have one public works question for you. Mr. Heer, will there be a condition number 30 added to this one as well?
There will be. And if you would like me, I could read it into the record now.
If you could, please.
Thank you. Condition 30 reads, installation subject to lease agreement. Further reads, this facility is planned to be installed on property owned, managed, and controlled by City of Thousand Oaks. Prior to installation of said facility and related equipment, applicant and city agreed to enter into a lease agreement addressing, excuse me, addressing such use of city property in a form approved by both parties. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Mr. Chu, when your time comes, if you could please respond to that. Appreciate it. Question regarding the cabinet location. I know it's, it is right in the middle of the sidewalk. It's actually a decomposed granite trail. It always kind of seemed like they're convenient locations, except if you're walking. What type of consideration is given to location of pedestals when it's in the right-of-way, when it's in a sidewalk or trail such as this, to make sure that we provide adequate access for pedestrians? Looks like Mr. Nader Haidari is going to, Mehadi is going to take the stand. Thank you, sir.
That's right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The placement of above-grade structures, such as the one you're alluding to for the electrical pedestal, is always a concern, and we keep a close eye on them. And in that location, the DG walk, or path, however it's referred to, is wider than the typical requirement for ADA clearance, which is four feet. I believe it's eight foot wide, so we should quite easily be able to locate it at the back of the walk in order to minimize the obstruction and provide the still required clearance for pedestrians.
So the ADA requirements is something that your staff reviews and makes sure that those are all taken care of?
For elements in the right-of-way, yes.
Okay. And then I do have another public works question. Meant to ask this last time, but we'll catch up. There were some questions regarding the structural integrity of the light structure once you start adding equipment. And I presume that there was some structural evaluation upon its installation, probably some give and take considering wind forces and seismic forces and such. But at what point does that become an issue, and how do you assess that when you see a report from a structural engineer?
Yeah, Mr. Kramer alluded to that previously to some, to some degree, but I can illuminate further, and that is that you are correct, that is a concern, and wind loading particularly is the concern as opposed to vertical loading or gravity loading because it's, we're pulling it quite close to the pole. And in fact, the design before you has a shorter arm on the antenna device than their original plan and some of the other locations they've installed. We had them shorten it up and hug the pole closer for not only aesthetics, but also for integrity of the overall structure. So we will be, prior to issuing any encroachment permit or building permit for this attachment, the applicant structural engineer will need to provide the reports to us, which we will review as well as building and safety to verify that these poles can accommodate the loading that's requested. But so far, from all indications, it will be fine because they're not a large device. The weight is fairly limited at approximately 40 to 80 pounds compared to many of the other elements that are already on the pole, which are cantilevering out across, halfway across the intersection. So these things are pretty beefy to begin with, and this is a relatively small add-on.
And just off the top of your head, are these light fixtures typically overbuilt to anticipate some excessive use in the future? Or are they basically custom-built for the use at the time it's proposed?
They're generally custom-built for the use, and so therefore, we would not be able to stick something out with a large cantilever or some excessive loading on them. And in this case, that's why this is a suitable solution as opposed to the traditional cell sites that we've seen that are much larger and heavier that likely would not be able to work. And also that, not only the weight, but the fact that the device itself is physically smaller will contribute less to additional wind loading because there's less basically of a sail element going on there, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Mr. Roundtree.
Joe Resonant here again. I'm going to ask an aesthetics question, so this might be appropriate for it or not. Different from the Canaan in Westlake Boulevard site where I think it's rosemary that surrounds these units, is there something that we can do to make this area more aesthetically pleasing? Because what we have basically is a big metal box that, quite frankly, is ugly. And it's just as ugly as the box that's next to it. And the next time another carrier comes through, they'll probably put another ugly box and another ugly box. And I know people on staff want to make Westlake Boulevard aesthetically pleasing, scenic highway, that whole story. So the question is, if I said to you, all right, we need to figure out a way to make it more aesthetically pleasing, plants, you know, up in Ventura, they paint them with art, something other than a ugly green box. So what would your, if you want to have a dialogue, I just, I need to feel a little bit comfortable because some of the residents are like, this is, this thing's ugly. And I totally agree with them. So what can we do to make it less?
Yeah, we did some treatment on the installation that is at, is that Crest Haven, I believe? There's an AT&amp;T site that had a substantial amount of landscaping and blending in and kind of concealment that took place. This is about, you know, five, six, seven years ago, that helped to shield that and improve the aesthetics of that application. That hasn't been evaluated to a great extent on this, on this case to date, but that's certainly something we could do and add on to this, to make it less impactful.
Yeah, we did something similar to this on a cell, excuse me, a solar site installation, where when you walk over a certain bridge, you'd end up seeing all these panels. So what we came up with on the commission was a way to help camouflage that as best as possible. So what I'd like, and maybe Mr. Heer here could come up with some special words, to basically give us our best effort, or your best effort, to try to hide this as best as possible based upon other things that you've done in the city. So what we don't see when we drive up on Westlake Boulevard is another green ugly box.
Mr. Roundtree, any additional questions for staff at this point? Okay. Then I will ask our representative to come for presentation, Mr. Carver Chu, representing the applicant. Again, you have 15 minutes for your presentation. We'll, questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Again, Carver Chu on behalf of Crown Castle. And I probably won't spend very much time up here. I certainly would just echo the comments that I shared previously. We think this is a good project and one that can be effectively integrated into the fabric of this community with minimum impact. Again, I'll point out that, that from a, from a federal standpoint, statistics show that, again, over 70% of all emergency calls originate from cell phones, and that more and more Americans are moving away from traditional landlines to wireless-only. And I think the way I would look at this is that wireless infrastructure really, in many ways, is becoming the new normal. That I think it's, it's fair to say that wireless infrastructure can and should be evaluated on par with other public infrastructure services, streets, sewer, storm drain, water. That the provision of effective, reliable wireless service is, is an important component of, you know, providing service to your residents and ensuring that from a public safety and, you know, certainly with other benefits, but certainly from a public safety standpoint, that, that their needs are met and that, that whether they're in their home or in their car or out on a walk, that they have the ability in an emergency to make that call. And certainly statistics would, would back that up. Beyond that, I just would, again, echo what I shared before, that, that we as a company are supportive of the condition as worded by the Assistant City Attorney. And so we would certainly be willing to comply with that condition should the project be approved. I would point out also, in terms of the discussion about structural calculations, we, it's standard for us, we're more than willing and will certainly provide those during the course of our plan check process if the project is approved. And I would just point out again, as I mentioned previously, that, that we've successfully deployed these in other jurisdictions on existing traffic signals. So we've done the same. We've, we've shown that from a structural standpoint, the installations can be accommodated structurally, and again, that they will not interfere with the city's ability to operate their, their facilities and maintain them. Beyond that, again, I just respectfully request your, your approval and would be happy to answer any other questions you might have regarding this particular location and installation. And I do, I think I might need to apologize to Commissioner Roundtree. I had a note here. I had written down councilman. If I, if I said councilman during my last, did I?
No, it's okay. I lost the election.
Yeah. So it just occurred to me, because I think I saw you react when I said that, and I went back and saw I'd written down councilman, so my apologies. I stand corrected. So Commissioner Roundtree, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't leave quite yet. I think we do have a question for you. Mr. Newman? Mr. Newman.
Thank you. Mr. Chu, can you provide a little bit of detail, particularly the timelines regarding the, this is trenching, trenching that would occur here, correct?
To be honest, I have, I'd have to go back and look. It's typically a combination of directional bore and/or trenching. It depends on, on the location where we're putting the pedestal and, and if there's, and also existing least duct, too. If there's existing conduit, we will, we will go in.
The timeline, the site plan rather refers to a trench and the text of the document says it's about 150 feet long. Do you have any ballpark estimate of what that would take?
Typically, again, 150 feet, we could probably do within a couple of days. I know they can do, it's not uncommon to do 100 feet or more in a given day. But again, you know, we'd have to come through, get our traffic control plan and, and obviously no approved encroachment permit to, to handle the, the flow of traffic and determine what the hours of the, of our work would be. But I think within 24 to 48 hours that work would be complete.
And do I understand correctly that the, this would actually cross Hillcrest?
This would, this would cross Hillcrest north to south, correct?
Yeah, to go from the antenna to the power station.
Correct, correct. The meter pedestal's on the, on the east side of Westlake Boulevard, but south of Hillcrest.
All right.
Yeah, and the idea, the thinking there was to place the meter pedestal in a location where there's existing street furniture. I mean, the meter pedestal conceivably can be placed anywhere. But that, that was, I think, the, the decision of my staff was to go ahead and have it where there's existing, where there's other existing equipment.
Something like one to two days to get from?
Oh, yeah.
The pedestal to the?
Absolutely.
And then the last question I had is, is just for clarification. Two of the photo sims, and I don't know whether this is intentional or this is just Google Earth weirdness or what, two of the photo sims have little arrows dropped on them. One of them is, it's, I don't know if we can present these. One of them has, has an arrow dropped about, either about where the pedestal is or maybe 50 feet south of it.
I, I know that we provided a photo sim to show the pedestal location.
Okay.
Separate from the, the one showing the antenna, so that, that's likely what you're looking at.
That's plausible, but then the other one has an arrow dropped right in the middle of Westlake Boulevard.
Yeah, so that.
So what's going on with that?
Yeah, I'm not sure that, that arrow would be.
I think I can address that. I think that's the place the person was standing when they took the photograph.
Could be.
If you look at the photograph and look at the point, you'll see that it seems to resemble the point that they were standing.
This is an aerial photograph?
You know, no, but it's an aerial photograph, but then if you look at the simulation, the direction that the picture was taken was from that.
Oh, I see. All right.
Yeah, to provide, to provide the orientation of the, of the sim.
All right. Great. So if that, if that's what that's supposed to indicate?
And I believe so, but, but going back to your original question, there were two separate sims. One, one did show the pedestal location and obviously that is separate from the pole itself, so that was called out.
Fair enough. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't.
We're not putting anything in the middle of Westlake Boulevard.
We're not also doing something in the middle of the street or anything like that.
It's not a part of my project, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chu, I have a statement from Mr. Heer, and he'd like your response when he's through.
Sure.
Good evening. Again, thank you. Based upon Mr. Roundtree's request, we have a couple of possible changes to, it'd be condition number 11, which deals with landscaping. One of them would be that we would add the wording to this section, paragraph again, numbers, number 11. That would read, "Applicant shall provide additional treatment to the proposed meter pedestal, i.e. landscaping paint to match surrounding area in order to screen such cabinet or provide a more pleasing appearance on the Boulevard to the city's reasonable satisfaction." Another suggested change could be, again, same section 11, we would add in the wording, "The applicant shall also identify a landscape treatment to screen the meter pedestal as much as possible." So I bring those to your attention, Commissioners. If you like one of those, we can suggest that as a condition and ask the applicant if he would be willing to consider such a condition added to this project.
Mr. Roundtree, since you were so astute enough to bring this up, do you have a preference one way or the other from what you've heard?
I want to share this with everybody, so I don't want to just myself. Can you read number one one more time?
Absolutely. "Applicant shall provide additional treatment to the proposed meter pedestal, i.e. landscaping paint to match surrounding area in order to screen such cabinet or provide a more pleasing appearance on the Boulevard to the city's reasonable satisfaction."
My preference would be the first one. While this isn't the landscaping issue, perhaps staff can provide comment on this. Is it possible to get that recessed as far back away from the curb so that that would also be part of it? Is that, is that an option? And I don't know if that should be included within this particular condition or elsewhere.
Maybe staff could find a section that would be more applicable. I don't see one other than landscaping at this time.
Excuse me?
Yes, please.
I think we need to make sure that we have the four feet clearance. You know, there's only so far you can move that, that pedestal.
Four feet clearance from what?
For accessibility.
I believe they're, they're proposing to move even further back to give greater amount of the ADA clearance.
That would be my preference, yes.
Further back toward the fence line as far as, as far as possible to wherever the right of way is. Looks like the right of way per the maps I'm reviewing here is not all the way back at the fence. That's why the other two boxes are also in the location they are right now and not themselves also further back. But we will study that and make sure it's recessed back as, as far as, as allowable.
Because from this photo sim, it looks like this, these bigger cabinets that, you know, pretty far in the middle.
Okay.
It's an issue of just the perspective because that's shot down about the height of the cabinet, which makes it look taller than it is.
We have a final version here. Are we okay with that?
And I should have said, we can also add this as a separate condition, just number 31 instead of 11, because landscaping is actually said. We can put it in there if you want, or we can add it as a separate condition, number 31, which would go to the 30 that I've added. I believe Mr. Town has another suggestion for 32.
Well, since I've just been reviewing 11, it just kind of has a, it's more in reference to any landscaping, but it'd be disturbed, maybe that would be a better approach, is to add it as a specific and separate condition.
That's fine. So we would say it would be 31.
Correct. Mr. Town?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to suggest another condition, and this is with regard to Public Works, concerns about the trenching versus directional boring. And it would read as follows. This would become condition number 32. And it would read as follows. "Applicant shall install its underground conduit using trenching or directional boring as reasonably determined by Public Works, by the Public Works Department." And the purpose of this condition is to essentially give the city the ability to control whether it is trenching or boring. The city's preference would be directional boring. So I read that not only for the commission but for the applicant, for you to review. So again, it would read as follows. "Applicant shall install its underground conduit using trenching or directional boring as reasonably determined by the Public Works Department." So that would become condition number two if it is approved.
Number 32, correct?
32, sorry.
Yes, okay. Okay, any further questions or comments?
Which version?
It was, is the first one, Mr. Heer, maybe you could just give us one more time with that, and then I'll ask our applicant if he understands it and can concur.
You had a challenge me in reading this again. Excuse me. Number 31. "Applicant shall provide additional treatment to the proposed meter pedestal, i.e. landscaping paint to match surrounding area in order to, to screen such cabinet or provide a more pleasing appearance on the Boulevard to the city's reasonable satisfaction."
So, Mr. Chu, we've already quizzed you on condition number 30, which fortunately was the same as the last time.
Right, right.
But we've added condition 31, which is to increase the landscaping to camouflage, if you would, the pedestal. And then condition number 32, to give the city the latitude to prefer boring over trenching. Do those make sense to you? Do you have any concerns?
No concerns. We're comfortable with, with both conditions. I would just, for purpose of clarification, as it relates to 31, we just want to make sure that, that obviously that cabinet remains within the right of way. So we'd want to make sure that we push it back as far as we can without encroaching across the right of way. And then we certainly would want to work with staff to come up with an acceptable plan. I'd like to make sure it's limited to our pedestal so that we're not having to, to try to screen all of the other equipment that's out there. That would be my request in accepting that condition.
Yeah, I think that was the intent. Was it just be for this one pedestal? And I do, we have heard from Public Works that they are going to take a close look at the right of way to make sure we've given adequate clearance but still stay within the right of way.
Correct.
So obviously I'll be able to work the details out that, out that.
Yes. So we're, yeah, we're comfortable with those conditions as, as wording.
Okay. So before I let you go, any questions for Mr. Chu? Okay, thank you for your presentation. Now I will go to our comments, or excuse me, to our speaker cards. And Mr. Steve Akresko, I'll give you another chance here to speak on the topic of which you intended. And then following that would be Mr. Vahay Kaffian.
Again, Planning Board Chairs. Just hearing this dialogue, I'm really, really disappointed. You've got residents here that say they don't want it. You have a request for a hearing, and just because the federal says you can do it doesn't mean you have to. You asked specifically, "What can we do differently?" Get a backbone. Stand up. Your residents don't want this. He's saying 70% of the people have wireless. 100% of the people here have wired phones. You've got two boxes right there, the most unpleasing look on the Boulevard. And you're going to put some lipstick on it, make it look pretty? Just because the federal says you can, you're worried about being sued. That's what I heard. We are worried about sued from the networks and the wireless company, therefore we should approve it. Get a backbone. You're not here to represent the community, the residents. Don't work this job. Just because you have it in your backyard, you need to stand up for yourself? Don't slam it down our throats. We don't want it. You already made up your decision. You're already putting frigging language in the contract without even approving it. Put the cart before the horse. Don't waste our time if you're not going to listen to us. Don't call a request for meeting. I've never seen such blatant cowardly behavior. You're worried about getting sued. Don't work this job if you don't have a backbone to stand up to what's wrong, what your own residents, constituents want.
Thank you, Mr. Akresko. Next, we have Mr. Vahay Kaffian.
Like Steve said, you guys have already made the decision of what the outcome is going to be. But just to let you know, I do have one of these towers on top of my, one of my properties. And it was installed in 2005, and they keep upgrading it. And even when they installed it, they said it's going to be, it's 100% safe, nothing happens, there's, there's no problems, everybody is safe, just like they said right now. They will tell you everything they want you to know. But this is, all the signs, all of a sudden afterwards, just start coming up on the property, and they keep putting it all over the place. I just want to read it for you guys, if, if you want. All persons should have electronic magnetic energy EMT awareness training, getting close to the property. All personnel entering the site must be authorized. Obey all posted signs. Assume all antennas are active. Before working an antenna, notify owner and disable appropriate antennas. Transmission, do not stop in front of the antenna. Use personal RF monitor while working near antenna. Never operate transmitters without shielding during normal operation. Do not operate base station antenna in equipment room. Now, right underneath it, there's a big sign that says, "Radio frequency field at this site may exceed FCC rules for human exposure." By putting that sign, they could allow do whatever they want to do there. And I do have a big issue with them. I'm a big lawsuit with them right now that's been going on for the maintenance aspect of it. And what's going to happen with these antennas when they put them up as far as maintenance is concerned? You guys were worried about the traffic on Westlake Boulevard. Well, the cul-de-sac is a private cul-de-sac, so they cannot go in there and park. So they have to park on Westlake Boulevard when they're maintaining it. That's going to, that's going to bring back the traffic, back it up. So maybe you guys should consider about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Jack Lance.
Good evening. I live at 4103 East Hillcrest Drive, right on the corner where the pole and the antennas are proposed to go. And I've been there for 32 years. We own the street. We own that cul-de-sac. I don't think the city's really, real sure about, you know, what is ours in that particular geographical area or whatever. I don't know. I've, I've come home and, and had backhoes with Verizon or, excuse me, Charter digging up our street and, and said, "What are you doing?" "Well, we're laying cable in here. You want to have cable, don't you?" I said, "Yeah, but, you know, it's our street. You just can't go digging up, you know, if I came over and started digging up your driveway, you'd have a problem with that, you know?" So there's a lot of things going on there. I have 10 acres there on Westlake Boulevard. And I've been keeping in step with the city and the planning department and everybody for the last 32 years on what they've asked me to do there, you know? With the coverage and the shrubs and the trees and all the other minutia they've asked me to do, I've done it. And, you know, I've got a water bill of about $1,000, $1,200 bucks a month there for that property on that 10 acres. I've, I've had many offers from Verizon and, and all of the carriers to put, you know, cell towers on my property because it goes all the way up over the top of the hill, comes right down where I gave them an easement to put the entry feature to North Ranch on my property. So I've been a team player all the way, and it's always been about aesthetics, you know? This, this last winter, I took out all the, all the, the trees that were like 30 years old, the pine trees, the yuks, all the shrubs. I revamped the whole thing, spent about $15,000 in there so the trees wouldn't fall over on some family going to Westlake Boulevard and take out a whole family, you know? And the city comes and cuts it back at the curb and then, you know, it's on me. So, hey, I've never asked for nothing from the city in the 32 years I've been there. And, you know, went ahead and put all new shrubs in there and revamped it, put all new irrigation in there, made it real pretty for everybody in North Ranch. And we're in that association, by the way. And then I get a call from the HOA and says, "Hey, you know, you did a really nice job there on Westlake Boulevard, but, you know, you, you didn't bury all that PVC white pipe and it's not very pleasing on our eyes." And I said, "Well, yeah, you know, heck, I'll take care of that right away. No problem." Okay? Now, you know, I, we've got this proposal to put these boxes in, you know, which is a jogging trail and a horse trail. And, you know, they're three by six boxes and, and I've got kids coming down there on bicycles, and I've got people jogging. They're a little disoriented when they get from the ranch down to Hillcrest. And they're a little dizzy, they're not right or whatever, and the kids, they're trying to get through the, the boxes are there and the poles that are there and all the other stuff that's there. And, and, and they crash into those poles, they crash into that box, they, they go over the, the fence, which belongs to the city, and they land on my property, and that's a liability for me. And, and now we're all talking about aesthetics and we've got to tear the signals down and put antennas up, and I've got to wear a hard hat to mow my lawn. It's like, you know, I, I don't understand what the heck, what the heck's going on here. I got 10 acres, but you're not going to let me develop any of it. I can't even cut another pad in above my house or any. I can't even cut another pad in above my house or anywhere around that land in that 10 acres. It's great if you've got goats and sheep, but I don't have any of those, because they're not allowed either. So, you know, I'm really, really not in favor of this, for not only the magnetic fields, which in my business I get involved in, and I know that we have, we have people that go out from the city and look after us and all that kind of stuff, and I appreciate that. But, you know, I just, I totally disapprove of this. If they want to have it, they can have it wherever they want to have it, you know? They just can't have it there. We have people coming in our street that have Verizon and AT&amp;T, and we have 15 of them a day at least. And we can't get in our driveways and we say, "Hey, what are you doing? You know, we got towers up the street, you know, they're Verizon and this, oh, you know what, they're all loaded up. We've got to sit here, we've got to call home, see if we need a loaf of bread, or we've got to do this, or we've got to do that." You know, it's just not working out. And now, we're going to add more. And how many more are we going to put in there? So, anyway, thank you for listening and playing. I appreciate it. And my yellow light's on. Thank you.
Mr. Lance, thank you. I do have a question for you. Just to clarify, which, you said your address is 4103?
It's 4103 East Hillcrest Drive. They put the sign right on my property. I had to call Laura and have them remove it after two or three weeks, because people were coming up my driveway and asking all these questions about it and everything. I had no idea what they were talking about, because it wasn't even, we didn't even have a date yet on the hearing.
And so, you're, you are actually on the corner, the first driveway, as you were to go into the cul-de-sac, you're the first driveway to the left there?
To the north, yes. The house sits back up on the hill there.
You have to go back.
And I have to maintain all of that, and I have for 32 years. I've never complained once with the city enforcement, code enforcement, whatever I've had to do, I've done it. But you know what? This is not safe, it's not aesthetically pleasing. It's for the same reasons that all the ridge tops are all protected, that I can't go up and develop or cut another pad in there. Where maybe I could get above those towers, and maybe I could see Ralph's, or maybe I could, I could see down Westlake Boulevard, it's not, it's, it's just not a good place to put that. And seeing as, oh, we own the street and we maintain it, and all the traffic that we get in there and everything, it's very horrific and very inconvenient.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Lance? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that's our final speaker card, and I had no statement cards. So, with that, if I could go to staff and perhaps address some of the issues that were raised. I don't know if it's Ms. Young or Mr. Kramer, or perhaps a tag name, if you could, some of the issues that were brought up, if you could address those for us, please.
Mr. Akresko said that the Fed, because the Feds say we can do it, that we don't have to do it. It's actually, unfortunately, it's just the opposite. The Feds say that we have to do it, it's not that we can do it. So, again, Congress has set out the policy, the FCC has created the rules, the state of California has created the rules. There's actually currently an Assembly Bill, Assembly Bill 57, that's floating through the legislature. It's in the Senate right now that would actually restrict us even further in terms of cell tower issues. So, this is why, this isn't as easy as other types of projects to really review and get into deeply. There are federal constraints and state constraints that do apply. So, this is one where, because there is a coverage challenge for T-Mobile, and because we have to look at T-Mobile's coverage independently according to the federal courts, because they play a role in this too, it's not that this is an optional process. The issue is, how are we going to balance the city's aesthetic concerns against the rights of the wireless industry, so carefully gathered over the many years that they've been operating? The other RF concerns, I've already spoken to the issues, but I'll speak to Mr. Kaffian's reading of the RF warning sign. That sign is very appropriate for a rooftop site where you can walk in front of antennas. This is not that. So, warning signs are appropriate on that type of situation. In fact, you think back over the years, we've brought to you projects on rooftops where we've had conditions and RF signage requirements. That's exactly why, so that we actually comply with the FCC rules and OET bulletin 65 that require that signage. We don't want to leave it up to an applicant to decide whether to put the signage in. We make it a condition, therefore, if they don't do it, we can go back under code enforcement. And Mr. Lance spoke to the RF issue, and again, I think we've talked about that in terms of our constraints. And that's, those are my comments. Lori has some additional.
I can understand how some of the residents would be unhappy with having a cell site near their house or their community. We've been reviewing these projects for quite a while, and they used to be very big and would cover a big area and would be on hilltops. A lot of those sites are now already spoken for, and the technology has changed, and they need to get closer and closer and get in and serve residential areas. And so, it's become a lot harder. But as far as reviewing these, this particular one is something that I think we found is one of the smallest proposals that we've had for providing coverage in a residential area and a small, with a small search ring. But we do, we do try our best to make sure that the project complies with Resolution 797, 197, in terms of being on existing structure, having the right zoning, and being less visually obtrusive. And in all of these aspects, this project does comply with the resolution.
Commissioner Newman.
Just to follow up with Mr. Kramer on the, you use the term "low power" several times tonight to describe these antenna, or these installations. Does, I guess, two questions. One, does, when you say "low power," do you mean they consume less power than, say, the six-foot Radome Tower we discussed at the last time you were here? Is it lower power than that, than that type of antenna?
I'll answer that question, then I'll also frame it to give you a better comparison. Large sites can emit, especially Verizon sites, by the way, because they tend to be the, because Verizon has four bands of service, they have the most power coming out. And they can, they can range easily between 4,000 and 8,000 watts of power. This site has less power coming out of it than one of those bulbs above your head, about 80 watts transmitted power. So, it's equivalent to a light, to the amount of power. Now, that's not a fair statement by itself, because you have to consider frequency, but that's what the FCC does, because the FCC rules for RF safety are not just based on power. It also takes into account the frequency, and the reason is, is that our bodies absorb RF more efficiently at some frequencies than others. So, when the FCC set up its rules, it actually set the most stringent rules, in other words, the lowest power levels permissible, at those frequencies that are most easily absorbed by us as big bags of water. So, this is a low-power site. It operates within, it will operate within the FCC rules, and it's a low-power site in comparison to virtually any other site on the Boulevard. This would be, this would be the lowest-power site anywhere along the Boulevard.
And for the reasons you just mentioned, low power, power is RF, is radio, right?
Correct.
So, low power means low RF as well?
Low power means low RF, because power is RF. The lights above you generate power, and it's at a particular frequency that our eyes can see. Radio waves travel at frequencies that our eyes can't see, but it's the same type of signal propagation.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I had a question regarding the pedestal. I think at the previous hearing, we had a question about why it's above ground, and there was a response that it was an SCE or Southern California Edison requirement. Does that indicate, then, that the Edison requirement supersede the city's requirements to underground pedestals and vaults?
The Edison Company operates with state tariffs, and their rules, we can't force them to change their tariffed rules. If we said that we wanted it underground, and Edison said no, because it would violate their tariffs, they simply wouldn't provide power to the site, and that would be within their right.
And is that because it's a different utility than the wireless, because of some of the other cell sites? We said, "You need to put your pedestal underground," and they've complied?
Well, it's because, in this case, they have a tariff approved by the state, and we, we're in this, in the hierarchy of things, we're below the state. So, if the state says that it's okay in the tariff, then we can't countermand the tariff.
So, it's not the city versus Edison as much as it is the city versus the state?
Well, Edison's rule is based on the fact that they want their meter readers to not have to bend over to read meters. In any event, whether, it's external to the city, so our argument is not with Edison or the PUC, it's actually with both, because both of them agreed that this was going to be the state rule.
Okay.
To expand on that comment, I believe also on those other instances where we had underground installations, that was for the vault and a lot of the other equipment, but I believe the meter pedestal has always been above grade. I don't think we've ever been able successfully to get those underground.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff? If not, I'd like to ask Mr. Chu to return the podium. You have five minutes to address some of the issues that have come up and any other comments you might make, care to share.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, no further comments. I appreciate what staff and Mr. Kramer have done in response to the questions that have been raised by, by the Commission as well as the residents. There was a question about maintenance and perhaps potential traffic impacts from this installation. I wanted to just point out that these are remotely monitored, so they do send signals back to what we call a network operations center, or NOC. So, there are alarms at the NOC. Should the equipment malfunction, should something at the site trigger a signal that goes back on a remote basis to our NOC, and a technician can then, can respond. So, it's on an as-needed basis in terms of ongoing maintenance. There's just an annual site inspection. So, it really is an unmanned facility with no ongoing traffic impact, other than when we physically install it. So, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that this is not going to generate any additional traffic or impact the flow of pedestrian or vehicle traffic on an ongoing basis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any questions? Mr. Chu? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for Commission discussion, comments, or emotion.
I move we, I move to adopt SUP 2015-70017 with conditions 30, 31, and 32, as noted.
Thank you. And Mr. Heer, do we have those in clarity, where you can then put those together for us?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Towne, do you think, as far as the conditions, are we okay from your perspective?
No, I'm fine with those.
Okay, okay. Any other comments or discussion? Mr. Newman.
Just two quick comments. One, I am a little concerned about the trenching versus boring issue, especially since this does cross a street. So, if boring is at all feasible, that would definitely be the way to go. And then, the other, again, about the power thing, I just want to reiterate something Mr. Kramer said, that this is a low-power installation. It's much lower power than many of the electrical appliances and network appliances that many people have in their homes. And so, while I understand the concern about having new technology, possibly unknown technology around, I'm not concerned about it from an RF perspective, because there's so much less of it here than what we already have. We've already crossed that. So, while I share the concerns of the residents that they've raised, I would support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, please vote.
Motion passed 4-0.
...each other, what are our call signs, and just general communication protocols. And they also throw some wild cards at us and see, okay, if we simulate this problem or that problem, how's the team going to react? And these things aren't just generic, they actually have a team that tries to ferret out, what are the things these guys are still struggling with? Let's throw some curveballs at them and see how they do, so that if the same problem occurs on launch day, we're ready for it. And if everything goes really well, we might not have a whole lot of work to do to work on that stuff between now and launch day, but if there were some wrinkles and things, they'll make sure they iron it out. This person needs to understand, they weren't supposed to talk to Person A, they were supposed to talk to Person B, you know, when they were using their headset, you've got to push multiple buttons so people can hear you, that sort of thing.
Even those simple things are really important.
Right.
Yeah. One final question is, when does your role end? Because the space mission may go on for years and years. When can you relax, basically?
For the most part, it's at spacecraft separation. And in this case, for MMS, we have four of them, and they're five minutes apart. So, it's really when that last one goes and separates from the launch vehicle, that's when everyone claps and does their side relief. The launch vehicle still does a little bit after that. The Centaur upper stage will make some maneuvers, so it doesn't crash into the spacecraft later on, because we don't want that to happen.
Of course.
And then, afterwards, we do have some post-flight data reviews and things like that. So, I'll probably really wrap things up and start to forget everything I ever knew about MMS about three months after launch.
Meanwhile, the scientists will be cheering cheers with the data they're getting back. You're going.
Right. They've had to kind of rely on us for a long time, but once separation occurs, they go into their, their mission mode, which will take them for years forward to do all the science mission on MMS.
I'm joined on the set right now by Mr. Troy Klein, who is the education and outreach lead for the MMS program. Troy, welcome back to the show.
Thank you very much, Franklin.
Troy, we've been talking about MMS for quite a few years now, and every time we meet up, you're doing some, some great public outreach. What exactly are you doing with MMS and outreach here at KSC this week?
This has been an incredible three days of full activity, with about 25 to 30 students and teachers who've come into, come to the center from four different states. We have people from Texas, Eubanks, Texas, which is a great call-out to that school, an incredible school district. We also have students here from the second smallest school in West Virginia, from Pawpaw, West Virginia, and they're actually responsible for something I'll tell you a little bit more about.
Okay.
We also have students here who have been working with us from Pennsylvania and a couple other states. So, we're really excited to have them all here right now, New Jersey as well.
Talk a little bit about the activities that you have going on.
One of the really awesome features that we have is a Planetarium portable dome that's run by our co-lead for the MMS education program, which is Pat Rife, and she's been running this the entire time for two days in a row, which just, it must be a couple thousand people that came through. And what's really exciting about that is the Grammy Award official artist, Laurence Gartell, is actually here and created artwork just for us to place on the dome and to make a connection between science and art. And then, also, we have 25 students here, all in a sea of red shirts, and they are all at the booth and the table, and they're doing countless activities with magnetism, stomp rockets, which is a lot of fun to make. And last but not least, we have a gentleman who created four spacecraft observatories of MMS out of cardstock paper that are the most detailed cardstock models I think I've ever seen, and they're on display. And we also have Lego models that were designed by our students from the Mars Area Robotics Team in West Virginia University. And you can download those models in all the directions as well online.
Speaking of West Virginia, you were telling me about a model or something that the students did there.
That is the actual... That is the actual, they built two models for us, and that actually morphed into a bigger project by the school in West Virginia, in Pawpaw. They actually built a life-size replica of the spacecraft, one of the observatories, out of balsa wood and actually real solar panels, right down to what looks like ummila right on the top in the covering. And it was so good that we invited them to bring it to Goddard Space Flight Center, where it was on display for a full month. And after that, this model will be traveling to the capital of West Virginia and be on permanent display, hanging in the main atrium and lobby of one of their just world-renowned museums there in the city.
Did you send your flatbed to go get it?
Actually, they had one. They had a NASA flatbed truck, and the spacecraft divides into two pieces right down the center. And so they pulled it apart, and we helped them carry it all in with several people there at Goddard. It took a little bit of work, but we, we were able to do it.
Earlier this year, I went to the